The regular meeting of the Putnam School District for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, is now in session. We'll have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Sandy Gilyard and our invocation by Mr. Jane Crawford.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let us pray. Dear Lord, I thank you for this beautiful, sunshiny day in Florida. I pray over this meeting, I thank you for each and every single one of these educators, Lord, who are tasked with the teaching of the future. I pray over this time that it is productive and that you will fill the room with wisdom and love. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jane. Jane's been a wonderful asset to South Putnam Church. We will now have a presentation by Ms. Alexis Hilton and joining us by Zoom is Clayton Brahman.
It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Alexis Hilton. I am the Ag teacher at Palacka High School. Today, we are honored to present two of our students that, over this summer, we were at the Florida FFA State Convention. And these two outstanding students went above and beyond and represented Putnam County with pride and their schools with pride. So first, I'd like to recognize Mr. Clayton Brahman, but rather than myself do it, Ms. Courtney Rogers, who is the Ag teacher at QI Roberts, I'm going to let her say a little bit about what Clayton was able to accomplish this year.
Hi, I'm Courtney Rogers. I'm the Ag teacher at QI Roberts, and I'm honored to introduce to you Clayton Brahman. He was the recipient of the State Star Farmer Award, which is the highest degree that you can get in Florida FFA, aside from the American degree. He started out with five head of feeder cattle and blossomed his cattle program into 65 head of not only feeder cattle, but purebred charlays as well. He was selected as one of the four finalists in the state and then went on to win this award. And we are extremely, extremely proud of him for his hard work and his dedication and representing Putnam County so well. So, congratulations, Clayton. Not only did we have Clayton Brahman win this award, but we also had Samantha Harper, who is not with us today. She was a top-four finalist from QI Roberts FFA as well in the Small Animal Proficiency Award for her rabbit breeding. And then we also had two students competing at the state level as well in creed speaking, which was Amber Nunamaker. And we also had Brianna Smith, who competed in extemporaneous speaking as well. And she had to choose a topic. With that topic, she created a speech within 30 minutes and then presented that speech within three to five minutes to a panel of judges. And we are so proud of her and Amber as well, as well as Samantha. So I think our chapter did very well, and I am so proud to be these students' advisors.
Thank you.
Yeah, Clayton is actually on his way to OSU right now, Oklahoma State University, where he is going to be pursuing a degree in animal science. So that was why he was not able to be here today, because he is moving on to some big things out in Oklahoma. And while we'll miss him here, we are so very, very proud of you. So thank you, Clayton, for zooming in with us. There's that happy smile. So next up that I would like the privilege to introduce to you is Ms. Taya Starks. Taya has been with me now for the past four years as an agriculture student. And one competition that she has done without fail every year is prepared public speaking within the FFA. And this has been kind of her bread and butter competition that she loves. And this year, she completed one of her biggest goals that she wanted to accomplish, and that was go to the state level and be in the top four. And so this year, she placed third in the state for prepared public speaking. She did her speech topic was on food insecurity and the importance of addressing food insecurity, but not just addressing it, of how should we solve it? And through her speech, she was able to kind of highlight a lot of the things that we can do with uses such as urban agriculture, hydroponics, aquaponics, and how those uses can be in agriculture to fight hunger and to fight food insecurity, which is, of course, a big issue within Putnam County itself. So we are very, very proud of her for placing third in the state. That is a huge accomplishment. Also, some other students I'd like to highlight from Palacka FFA, Ms. Josie Pogue, who's only a freshman. She actually sang the National Anthem at the final session of the Florida FFA Convention, which is apparently, from what I've heard, they save the best for last. So if you guys are ever in need of somebody to sing the Star Spangled Banner and do an absolutely outstanding job, Ms. Josie Pogue is your girl. We also had Mr. Tristan Pogue, her brother, competed in one of the events from Florida Farm Bureau, as well as we had... Oh, three earned the state degree. I'm trying to remember all this stuff, because it's been a great year. Ms. Taya Starks, Ms. Callie Johnson, and Ms. Emily Lands, all three of them earned the state degree, which is the highest degree in FFA that they can earn within the Florida FFA Association. And I know all three, after state, they said that they want to earn their American degree, which will be this upcoming year, where they get to go to Indianapolis and they get to earn their American FFA degree, which is an extremely high honor. So again, I know me and Ms. Rogers, we are both very proud of all of our students and their accomplishments, and just look forward to great things within Putnam County and all of our FFA programs across this county, because our goal is to promote premier leadership, personal growth, and career success in our students. So thank you for having us here today.
If I could take a minute, Alexis, if you could step back up there, I just want to, again, I know you've received some accolades, but just proud to say that we were able to recognize her at the state level. Was that last week or two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, I lose track. Honored as the Putnam County Teacher of the Year, and she was there with all the other teachers of the year. And again, congratulations. Thanks for representing us, okay?
It was an honor. And I will be honest, I've always kind of looked at myself as an Ag teacher and nothing more than an Ag teacher or CTE, but going to the toy gala and being able to mingle with other teachers from across the state that have the best and the brightest from their school districts, it was eye-opening for me to remember that I am an educator, no matter where I am at, and we love kids.
You have a great network now to reach out to if you need to, ever need to call some other teachers.
Exactly. Exactly. But our focus is always the students, and I'm proud of that.
Yeah, we're proud of you. Yeah, thank you.
Alexis, I have one question. How did the food...
Insecurity?
The program that we attended last...
Spice and spice?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. It went very well. If I remember correctly, let me make sure I have all my data in my head straight. We served 17 families in our community just with this first year. I know already the grant writers from UF have been in contact with myself, Hawthorne High School Ag Program, and Okowi. Those are the three schools that are now going to focus in the Ag programs and culinary to reach out to their communities. The goal this year is to reach over 30 families. And again, we are now partnering with our robotics program at Palacka High School. We are receiving a Farm Bot, which I'm very excited about. And so hopefully, the goal is to create more fresh produce that we can give back to families in our area.
And speaking of that, we actually, you know, we're starting an artificial intelligence program this year, and it's going to be centered at QI. But a lot of that technology is actually being used in agriculture.
Yes.
And we actually, I know one of the farms in South Putnam, they were talking about using some things they put in the soil and can measure the moisture in the soil and can actually determine how much water to use.
Yes, sir.
Because you don't want to overuse it, but conserve water. And you can tell us what all it measures, but using artificial intelligence, you can actually have a greater yield.
Yes.
And, you know, kind of use your resources more efficiently. So I don't know if you have any information on that, but that's where technology is really becoming part of our system in agriculture as well.
Drone work and then such things as you're saying is artificial intelligence in the soil that can measure yield, measure overall nutrients of the soil itself and kind of what does the soil need, rather than doing a broadcast of just the generic fertilizer, so to say. I know this past week, my new FFA officer team, we were able to go to Worldwide Aquaponics, which, from what I hear, our school system is going to be pulling a lot of food from, if I'm correct, that's what she told us. But it was really cool to take my students to see that there are alternative ways and she calls it low-tech, but to me, that was pretty high-tech, a lot of her usage of aquaponics and hydroponics and NFT systems. But yes, technology is very much incorporated in agriculture, and that's something that our students need to be aware of, is that they go together. And yes, we can do the old-fashioned of get your garden hose out and get out there in the soil and do it the hard work, which is important to learn as well. But technology, with the growing population and the lower amounts of land that we have for availability, technology is going to have to be a bigger part in agriculture, absolutely.
And we were awarded, or you can tell me a little more, a farmer's school grant, another farmer's school grant this year.
Oh, exciting. That's exciting.
So that's good stuff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Okay, we'll move to the public comment section. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. We have no public hearing, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Ms. Gilyard, do you have anything that you would like to pull?
All is well.
All is well. Mr. McGinnis?
I had two, G4 and G5.
G4 and G5.
What did he say?
G is in Gordon, four.
And five.
Okay.
And Ms. Crawford, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
None.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I offer a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus G4 and 5.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Sandra Gilyard that we accept the consent agenda minus G4 and G5. And we have a second by Ms. Jane Crawford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four, zero. Mr. McGinnis?
Well, our IT Director is here to answer your questions.
Leonard Harvey, IT Director.
Hey, Leonard.
Hey.
G4, my question was, I was doing the math, I didn't bring my paper here, but I was just wondering, when we are doing new Chromebooks, we're not ever going to be, I mean, I know we're not going to be in a shortage, but this is going to cover till 2022, then what do we do after that?
So we have a certain amount that is allocated in our budget every year. And so normally, we would purchase Chromebooks from, prior to 2018, we were using DCP dollars. And then I asked for an increase in our budget, which Rhonda Odom, Chief Financial Officer, allowed. And so we were purchasing Chromebooks through that increase of our budget. So this year, I'm trying to focus on CTE, using that extra money towards CTE projects. And so this will allow us to free up that money, so I can fund some of those, and then we'll use this grant to purchase those Chromebooks.
Any other questions?
Question on 5, did you...
5, I just didn't know if we...
Should we vote on that? Should we vote on G4 first?
You can vote on them as a block if you want. But if you wanted to go finish one and go to the next, you can do that also.
And so, and I'll just explain real quick, with the G4, that is purchasing the Chromebooks and the hotspots, and then with the T-Mobile Project 10 million, we just require a signature. I've signed a paperwork saying that we intend on doing it, but we just need y'all's official signature, just so we can go through with that.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, that was the other question, I think it was, the hotspots, how does that work then within the county? Do we do, we have designated spots that we...
So we would target families that are in need of those hotspots. So we have some deployed out, we are using Verizon. With Project 10 million, we're able to get four times as many Chromebooks for the price that we, or hotspots for the price we would pay using Verizon. So it's a cost savings to us, and we're getting more Chromebooks.
Sounds like a great value.
Yeah.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Leonard.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept G4 and G5.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis to accept G4 and G5 on the consent agenda, and a second by Ms. Sandra Gilyard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. We are out of regular session and into emergency session. We have two items. The first is the personnel allocations change eight.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept emergency item 2021-2022 Personnel Allocations Change 8-8.1, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion...
It doesn't matter.
...to accept item L1, the personnel allocations for '21, '22, change eight, 8.1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. And item number two, the MOU between the Department of Health and the school district.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Department of Health and school district MOU, justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Second. We have a motion to accept item L2 by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Ms. Sandra Gilyard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. We are out of emergency session and back into regular session. We have no new business, so we are two reports. Ms. Gilyard, do you have a report?
No, just want to congratulate and commend Mrs. Kathy Comer for 34 years of service to the Putnam County School District, and congratulate her and wish her well on her retirement. The same also for Mrs. Wendy Hancock for 32 years and her retirement, and we just pray God's blessings be upon both of them, and we thank them for their service. And then to this great FFA program, man, I tell you, one while it did look like our FFA programs were on a decline, but I tell you, in the last 10 years possibly, they are emerging as someone to be reckoned with. And so we congratulate all of them and thank them. I know that it is now time, and they're getting the schools ready for our children to come back and for our teachers to come back. And as always, we are concerned with everything that we are hearing. And we did hear what the governor said, but we do pray that parent choice, that they choose what is in the best interest of their child. And so we just want to be on guard and make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can as a district. And again, we just, I just want to commend our district all the way from, what have we named this, the White House, Taj Mahal, whatever, all the way to every classroom, to every bus for an excellent job, and we appreciate you. Don't say it enough, but God knows, we appreciate your favorite thing you do. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Gilyard. Mr. McGinnis?
Okay, I'd like to echo praises to the FFA teams, the state champions all around, and especially the people that we just, you mentioned that, and I can't even remember their names right now, but dedicated years of service. I completed some surveys, I guess, for COVID-19 through the Virginia Tech, Cornell College, I don't know if you guys did that, but it was like 10 minutes, and it was pretty interesting. I did get some board member on Live Putnam called and wanted to tell me how excited they were about the prospects of Live Putnam being alive in Putnam County now, and shared how we were on board with it as well. And that's about it. Last thing, I had Joy, the dog that ran the freight with us, had eight puppies, three girls first and five boys. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
Hey, everybody. I also want to congratulate our FFA programs, two of the many excellent FFA programs that we have in Putnam County. They're all known for their excellent programs and their wonderful advisors who work so hard to teach these students so many leadership skills that have gone on to serve them for the rest of their lives. I'm very happy for Kathy and Wendy. It's going to be really strange not seeing them in our district, because they've been with us a very long time, and both have done an excellent job. I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I've been getting a lot of emails and phone calls from parents about this, that, and the other, and I know that's part of the job. I'm just so thankful that we have such an excellent staff that I can call on and rely on to get the information that I need to get back to these parents. So a shout out to our staff. I'm praying for a wonderful and safe start to the school year. I echo Sandy's comments. This thing is just getting worse and worse by the day, and we are really going to have to be vigilant in our protection of our students, but they're going to need to do their part as well as the parents and the teachers. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. I completely agree, our FFA programs are outstanding. I'm so excited about all the programs. I remember several years ago, hearing Clayton do a speech, I think it was before the fair or something, and I was just so impressed by him, and I just wish him well at Oklahoma State University. That's exciting. It's a long way from home, but he's used to traveling, because he's competed in so many different things. I would just like to echo the concern that some parents have expressed to me, and I agree that it is completely your choice. And unfortunately, I probably know of four or five times more people now that are sick with COVID than I did at the height of the previous part of the pandemic. So I agree that we need to completely make positive that we are keeping our schools and our buses and our cafeterias and our sports teams and everything as safe as possible, and our teachers and all of our employees. And I also agree with the fact that our district has some wonderful people that get back to us as quickly as possible. It's actually amazing. I sometimes think they have so much to do, and they'll just call you right back. It's just amazing.
Right.
And I would like to say that school is really, really getting close, because we had volleyball tryouts at Crescent City Junior/Senior High School, as I'm sure they had at Interlochen and Palacka yesterday. And it was exciting to see that many girls wanting to participate, and the fact that we can have three teams for them this year. Our seventh and eighth grade group is pretty new, and so that's exciting, though. We had excited parents, excited girls. And that's all I have. Dr. Searcy?
Yes.
No, no, Mr. Taylor.
I actually have a little update. Earlier this year, we entered into the litigation with the Hogan Law Firm regarding Juul and the opioids. And there is a good first step in the opioid lawsuits. There's two companies that are going through bankruptcy. We expect to see a proposed settlement come through in the next couple days. Those settlements, I believe, are going to be in the neighborhood of 25 and 5 million, and that's going to get split between a lot of things. But it looks like the settlement is saying that there will be some grants that can be applied for and that we would be able to see some return on that. So we're excited by that. There's still more things to come and developments to come, and...
If you have an old group, you may qualify for...
Hopefully, we'll see more benefits. And if nothing else, maybe changes in behavior. So we're excited by that, and it was good news to hear today, and we'll keep you abreast of updates as we get them.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Alexis.
And Dr. Searcy?
Yeah, I have several items. First of all, if you'll check your calendar, if you look at November, we have two meetings in November, and I'm going to ask that the November 16th Board Meeting be moved, either be canceled or be moved to the Tuesday, I think it's the 23rd, is that correct? Tuesday, the 23rd, which is the last day before the holidays. I will be out of town for a commitment, and we do have a, that's the time we do reorganization, but I talked to our attorney, and we could actually do the board reorganization in that first meeting, since this is not an election year. So I would just like to know what the pleasure of the board would be. Do you want to hold that meeting, or do you just want to cancel and have one meeting?
Do we need to...
Cancel.
Because I was going to offer a motion that we cancel.
Is that something we need to...
I want to do it the day before Thanksgiving.
Do they need, just do it by consensus, or do they need to...
Let's vote on that one, because it changes the counter.
Well, I would like to also make the recommendation that we move it to maybe, although that is my birthday, the 9th of November, just because then, I mean, I don't know when our last meeting in October is, I just feel like that might be a...
That's fine. I just don't want to do it right before Thanksgiving for people who are going out of town.
The 2nd is fine. But yeah, the 23rd might be bad, because it is near Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So we have the one in November, and it's going to be November...
It's November 2nd.
November 2nd.
And actually, we could move that to the 9th, if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Just to have it, and that'd be better for me, too. But would you like to move that to the 9th and be a little more kind of centered?
That's kind of, I feel like...
That'd be fine with me.
I feel like that would give us like two weeks between and then...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we could have our, you could have your reorganization on that. Susan, you see an issue with that? Is that good? So November the 9th?
So do reorg on the 9th.
That's correct.
Yeah, got it. But 3:30.
Sounds good to me.
Right. Okay, I'm just changing on mine. Okay, thank you.
So we need a motion...
Yeah, let's do that by motion, but it just, you don't need to record the vote.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I offer a motion that we cancel our November 16th meeting and move the other meeting from the 2nd to the 9th and have the reorganization.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the meeting from November 2nd to the 9th and cancel the November 16th meeting. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. A couple other things, just want to thank our sheriff. He joined me last week in New Orleans, and he and I together actually did a presentation at the National School Safety Conference, presenting about our Guardian program. And we actually showed some video of our school board during the, if you recall, back in 2018, for those of you that were on the board, had some tough decisions to make, but we just talked about how our district was one of the first districts to actually implement the Guardian program at that time. And of course, since then, we've been very successful, you know, it's been, you know, very successful in our schools, and just want to commend you on that. But we did have a national audience, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the sheriff's office for their continued cooperation in helping us with the Guardian program. We did talk, we were talking about safety a minute ago, and as we know, the governor's executive order last Friday prohibited the mandate of masks, and we had already made masks voluntary. And, uh, we had already made masks voluntary. And again, we're, we're, and that is voluntary as long as they can social distance, okay? We want to make sure that we continue to maintain safety. Our schools are being cleaned, sanitized, just like last year. And we're taking every measure, uh, having places if students are getting sick, where they can go and, you know, be secluded until we can contact a parent. So again, we're trying to take those measures very serious and make sure we mitigate, you know, this latest uptick in the virus. Want to commend our, uh, HR department for the new teacher institute that's going on today and tomorrow. And, uh, Ms. Wyatt Hurst just came in from the institute. And can you tell us how many teachers, new teachers we have there today?
Forty-six today and we'll have a few more joining us tomorrow.
Right.
Wow.
It's really good to see these brand new teachers. They're just glowing, you know, they're, they're ready to get started. And I think the program has really helped, uh, give them a lot of support. You know, talking about the new teacher mentor program, novice teacher mentor program. So again, I, I think our teachers are ready to hit the ground. And, and as you know, we've, we've been able to retain teachers a lot more over the last five years through our novice teacher mentor program. So when we hire teachers, we, we plan on them being with us for a while, so. Uh, and finally, just want to commend one of our own, Mark Modle. And I thought Mark might be here today. Don't see him. But I received a letter, if I could just read a brief excerpt from the letter. Uh, this is from a gentleman from the Boy Scouts of America. He said, "This summer, one of your employees, Mark Modle, attended our Boy Scout camp in Clayton, Georgia, at Camp Rainy Mountain. Mark gave his time and energy to help the scouts develop the values taught by our scout oath and law. By helping youth attend camp, Mark was instrumental in their development, not only as scouts, but as young adults. His service to scouting means so much to all of us as we provide guidance to the future leadership of our communities." So just want to commend Mark. And Mark, as you know, is the head of our teachers union. And, uh, we just appreciate him and many of our employees who give their time above and beyond what they normally do. So congratulations, Mark. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, anyone have anything further? Ms. Crawford, do you have anything else?
Now I just wanted to find out if I can just come back at five or do I have to sit here?
I'll send you a new link.
Oh, Susan said she would send you a new link, so you, you can leave.
Perfect.
Okay.